And I'll wait for TC Media to start. Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Tombwater City Council Meeting. Uh, welcome everyone. Uh, we will start off with roll call.
Councilmember Lea Adalha.
Present.
Councilmember Angela Jefferson.
Present.
Councilmember Joan Cathy.
Present.
Councilmember Eileen Swarthout.
Present.
Councilmember Michael Althouser.
Present.
Councilmember Peter Agabe.
He's excused this evening.
Councilmember Charlie Schneider.
Present.
And Mayor Debbie Sullivan.
I'm present. Uh, join me in our salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, we have some special items this evening. The first item is proclamation of the National Voters Registration Day, and Councilmember Swarthout will be reading the proclamation. You're on mute.
God, after two years, I think I figured this out. Sorry, Mayor. Whereas registering to vote empowers eligible citizens to exercise their right to vote on election day. And whereas the city of Tombwater and Thurston County are committed to strengthening democracy by encouraging voter registration and increasing participation in all elections. Whereas civic-minded people and organizations have collaborated to establish National Voter Registration Day on September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And whereas the goal of the two thousand and twenty-three National Voter Registration Day is to create awareness of elections and motivate eligible citizens to vote in coming months. And whereas the strength of our democracy depends on the willingness of our citizens to participate by choosing the people who will lead us and by voicing their opinions on important matters that will come before the voters on election day. And whereas fewer voters participate in local odd-year elections due to lower levels of media coverage and information about local issues and candidates. And whereas the Thurston County Urge Your Neighbors to Vote Challenge aims to encourage regular voters to reach out to their neighbors with the tools and information they need to feel informed and empowered to turn in their ballots. And therefore Debbie Sullivan, Mayor of City of Tombwater, does hereby proclaim September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three National Voter Registration Day and encourages all eligible City of Tombwater residents to register to vote, to vote when they receive their ballot, and encourage their neighbors to vote.
Thank you. Uh, we have Tilly Puller from the Auditor's Office, and if you want to say a few words, you're certainly welcome to do so, and I will bring you the proclamation in a moment.
Perfect. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you again for recognizing National Voter Registration Day. Voting is the cornerstone of our democracy, but you can't vote if you're not registered. Thurston County has about one hundred and ninety-six thousand registered voters. Our biggest goal in voter registration is reaching out to our young community. Only about seventy percent of our eighteen-to-twenty-four-year-olds are registered to vote in Thurston County, compared to about ninety percent of our other age groups. The good news is voter registration has never been easier. We can now, we now have same-day voter registration, and sixteen- and seventeen-year-olds can preregister before the November election. Two thousand and twenty-three marks the tenth anniversary of National Voter Registration Day in Thurston County. We're celebrating this by launching the Urge Your Neighbor to Vote Challenge. We will be partnering with Timberland Regional Library to empower, empower voters to urge their neighbors to vote. We are challenging the frequent voters to lend their knowledge to the more less-frequent voters, bridging the gap, bridging the gap to create a more informed electorate. Libraries throughout Thurston County will carry ballot party kits that voters use to host their own events to encourage their friends, families, and neighbors to vote. Voters can log, can log their participation online at votewa.gov to register their jurisdiction. The most participants per jurisdiction will win a prize. Libraries are essential tools in empowering informed voters, ensuring that our democracy thrives throughout knowledge and engaged citizens. Thank you for your support and partnership on this and many other important topics.
Perfect. So here is the proclamation. And we also provide pencils as a little gift for you. So, thank you very much for coming to see.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, next will be, and it's not Brian Hurley.
Mayor, may I ask her a question if she's still there?
Oh, yeah, go right ahead.
Is Tilly still there?
Yes, she is.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, okay, hi. Um, I was wondering, um, is there any movement in, uh, the state of Washington, Thurston County, state of Washington, to, uh, register when you get your driver's license?
So there currently is right now. So when a person regis, I'm sorry, when a person gets their driver's license, they are asked by the Department of Licensing if they like to register to vote.
So it's, uh, it's voluntary then for?
Correct. And that's through the Department of Licensing, yes.
And so has that, uh, how long has that been in effect? Has that raised the younger voter percentage?
It actually has not raised. What continuously increases for us right now is the sixteen-to-seventeen-year-olds can preregister. So we're getting a lot more of our high school kids that are preregistering, and then they look forward to that November election when they automatically get a ballot mailed to them.
And so then when they get their driver's licenses, they?
When they get, yeah, my son, who is seventeen, got his license last year, and he preregistered. And then next November, he will get his official ballot, yes.
Now, what if someone is, um, twenty-seven and getting their license for the first time? Are they, they ask if they want to register to vote?
Every person that goes through the Department of Licensing, they're required to ask the question, correct.
And do we know anything about the stats in that, if people are doing that? Because it, it seems like a thing to encourage in all of the other wonderful things you're doing, to remind people that when they renew their license or get their license for the first time, they can register to vote.
Correct. So we do know with all of our county auditors and their association, they do work closely with the Department of Licensing and their leadership to ensure that across the state, this is happening at every customer service counter that they have.
That's great. I'm glad to hear that. And I thought of it again today because the state of Pennsylvania just passed today on this voter, National Voter Day, the this people to be able to register when they get their driver's license, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, so Assistant Chief Crimmins will go ahead and introduce our newest, uh, paramedic firefighter.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Uh, it's my pleasure to introduce our newest firefighter, paramedic, Nate Ratherstem. Uh, Nate actually comes from us, uh, from Bellingham. He started in two thousand and twelve and then promoted to paramedic in two thousand and twenty, which, as we all remember, is right at the start of the pandemic, so good choice. So since then, uh, we actually had the opportunity to, he tested with Thurston County Medic One, and we hired him on August eighteenth. Since August eighteenth, he's been riding third on our Medic Five medic unit, uh, running calls, kind of learning the system, uh, taking protocol tests, and actually his last shift on third will be the twenty-fourth, I believe, and then he'll be part of our minimum staffing moving forward, starting on September twenty-seventh, so excellent news. Uh, Nate's doing a great job. We're very happy to have him. Uh, look forward to a long career in Tombwater, and I'll turn over to Nate if he wants to say anything real quick.
Glad to be here, and, uh, I'd like a pencil.
Okay, so next person on the list for special items is Alyssa Jones Woods, and she is going to, uh, talk about the Soul Smart Silver Designation. And thank you, everyone, for coming, and.
I'm ready for the presentation. Good evening. It's been a while since I spoke into a mic that wasn't attached to headphones. Um, thank you for having me tonight. Um, I'm happy to share that we are now Soul Smart Silver, and I'll go into a little bit of detail of what that means. Soul Smart is a national technical assistance and designation program from the Department of Energy, encouraging local jurisdictions to reduce the solar soft costs and obstacles that get in the way for residential small solar installations. We pursued Soul Smart in Tombwater because we have the city council strategic priorities to be a leader in environmental sustainability, which includes streamlining permitting for green projects as well as continued implementation of the climate mitigation plan. And in the climate mitigation plan, we have a distinct action to do Soul Smarts, so one more that's completed from that list of seventy-two. Um, when we entered into the designation process, there were three levels. There's now a platinum level, but we started, so we're looking at the, the bronze, silver, and gold options. Each of them have their own prerequisites and a number of points that you need to attain in order to achieve that designation. And like I said before, we are Soul Smart Silver, and I'll get more into how we're really, really, really silver about that. In Washington, there are ten other jurisdictions, or ten jurisdictions total that have gone through the Soul Smart process. We have four bronze communities, Bainbridge Island, Edmonds, Bellevue, Langley, three silver, um, ourselves, Thurston County, who also just got designated silver, and King County, and then three gold communities, Olympia, Issaquah, and Mercer Island. We were already doing a lot of the things that were necessary to get the Soul Smart designation, which gave us a good running start. Um, some of the things that we had already done is we already had a solar permit checklist available on the website. We already required no more than one permit application for small rooftop solar. Our residential solar permit fees were a reasonable cost, less than five hundred dollars. We already allowed solar by right in all major zones. We didn't have height restrictions except for near the airport, which is outside of our control. Uh, we had already installed solar on government facilities, this building that we're in. Uh, we already were purchasing solar energy or renewable energy through our power purchase agreement through, uh, the Green Direct Program from PSE. And the Green Team had already established a goal to increase our use of renewable energy for city operations. But we did a couple of things, um, from where we started to improve the way that we encourage residents to go solar. Uh, our permitting and inspection staff attended trainings on best practices for permitting for solar PV or photovoltaics. Uh, also, our planning and zoning staff did a training on planning and zoning for solar PV. We reviewed our zoning code and identified any obstacles intended or unintended that might have gotten in the way for people applying for permits or wanting to put solar on their home. And we created a solar landing page where we have a solar permit checklist, application, a zoning determination letter, a solar fact sheet, frequently asked questions. That's all at our website, forward slash solar. And here it is. Um, this is our solar landing page. So you can see we have an accordion widget with the green bars. You click on those. It expands with, um, answers to questions that are commonly asked when someone is starting the process to put solar on their home, as well as questions that someone might ask if they can't put solar on their home, but they still want to support renewable energy. We also promoted Olympia Community Solar's Solarize Group Purchase Campaign, which is another action actually in the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. Um, we developed and launched a solar dashboard to track the number of solar permits monthly and by year, total amount of solar installed in Tombwater, the PSE electricity mix, so we can watch it get cleaner, and also the number of, uh, residents that are involved in or subscribe to community solar projects. So that's people that don't own their roof, have a lot of trees and don't want to cut them down, but still want to support solar. So all the options are listed there. We didn't need to, but we did send a thank you letter to every resident who has installed solar, to make sure that they knew about the dashboard and that there is going to be a little star or sun near where their home is, but unidentifiable. Um, we did a press release about the city's support of solar energy, and if you remember back here, that, um, Soul Smart Silver requires a hundred total points and gold requires two hundred. We actually, uh, attained two hundred and ten points. So we're ready to go for gold whenever we can get over one obstacle for ourselves, which is having a three-day turnaround time for solar permits. So once we're ready for that, we'll be able to resubmit and get gold without having to do any other work. This is our solar dashboard. Um, this is data from this month, so we have more permits this year already than we did last year for solar. You can scroll into that map. The, um, light bulb is for commercial, and the little suns are for residential. You can see that the number of permits for solar is growing, our total capacity, all of that good stuff. So this gets updated on a monthly basis. And just noting that we made it. We got our silver designation, and that's something to celebrate. So happy to answer any questions if you want, but really, this is the plaque we're going to put up in City Hall now.
Great, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Althouser?
Uh, thanks. Yeah, I just have one question about that last criteria for the gold designation, the turnaround time. When we did solar at, at my residence, when we were doing the permit, it was, I think, LNI that came out and did the actual onsite inspection. So is some of that actually out of our hands because of our state partners are sort of dependent upon their capacity and timelines?
Yes. The, the three-day turnaround time is for our permit application. Um, I know that PSE also is involved in inspections in LNI that do make it always longer than three business days.
Thanks.
Great. Any other questions?
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilmember Adalha.
Thank you, Mayor. Alyssa, along with, uh, Councilmember Althouser's question, when I got solar, I had to wait for an inspection from PSE, LNI, and Tombwater. And there was talk about why three different inspections? And could that process be streamlined at all? Because there was a multiple weight, not just with LNI and PSE, but there was a significant weight with Tombwater, right? Just because of the timing. Has, is there an opportunity to streamline that process? Or has that happened with that goal?
So we tried to make it so it would be easier on the resident, um, to get everything put together for a successful permit application initially. That's the main focus of the Soul Smart program, is to make sure that they're successful immediately, so they don't have to resubmit and resubmit and resubmit. It doesn't quite speak to the, um, turnaround time for getting the inspection done on a final project.
Is that going to be continued to be, like, looked at and circled back on to see that could be an item for continuous improvement?
I can definitely look into it.
Thank you.
Right. Any other questions? So thank you very much, and, uh, great, and I look forward to us getting gold in the near future. All right, next item on our agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone registered to online? We don't. Okay. Do you have one person registered in council chambers? Dave McCandry, if you could come to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Dave McCandry, five oh five Fourth Avenue Southwest. Um, I'm here initially or at the outset to report that I had a very productive and rewarding briefing from city staff today regarding my uh, repeated query along the, um, question of the, uh, the, uh, status of the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals ruling on the natural gas hookups in appliances, engineered by Ms. Cook. As I said, it was very satisfying, and I won't be asking about that, at least in the short term, again. That's the good news. Uh, the bad news is I can, I plan on continuing to attend council meetings, uh, for the foreseeable future with my serial lecture series, uh, three minutes at a time. Um, partly, well, it's been so long since I first made this comment back in May, I think I need to stipulate it again. I'm, climate, uh, change and global warming is real. It's a problem. It needs to be addressed. As I said earlier, I've written a book with climate change as a backdrop, so that's not where I'm coming from. Where I have some hesitation or reservation about, is about some putative climate change solutions. Most infamously, infamously, the, um, the ban on natural gas hookups and appliances. I also note later on in the agenda is the inter-local agreement on the Thurston, uh, Climate Mitigation Plan. Um, let me ask now in my remaining minute and a half, if there's a handout for that agenda item tonight, I'd respectfully ask the copy of it so that I can review it before you get to that, uh, agenda item. So in a minute and a half that's left, the Climate Action Tracker, which is the body that monitors the Paris Agreement, noted that between two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and twenty-two, China's greenhouse gas emissions increased by twelve percent. Chinese coal production reached a record level in two thousand and twenty-two. Between two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-two, China added a hundred and thirteen megawatts of new coal-fired capacity. Those coal trains that go through East Olympia every day, they're going to China or elsewhere in the, uh, in the world. National Public Radio, which I think many of us would consider an authoritative, uh, source, reported recently, even with that buildup in coal-fired capacity elsewhere, that China, uh, permitted more coal plants in two thousand and twenty-two than any time in the preceding twelve, seven years, which has already led to this increase. The point of all of this is that I, I just urge caution regarding pell-mell push to electrification and expensive energy alternatives. Um, where seemingly solely that's being borne on, on a North American basis and not, not globally. Um, so, uh, I'll have more to say about this as the weeks and months roll by. I'm down to my final thirteen seconds. Again, if I could have a copy of any handout relative to uh, uh, council item seven B, I'd appreciate it. Thank you for this opportunity.
Great, thank you. Uh, and is there anyone else in council chambers who wish to speak? I do not see anyone. All right, we will then move to the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move we approve the consent calendar as presented.
And I second. Okay, it's been moved in second to approve the consent, uh, calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. All right, the motion carries. With that, we approve the minutes of the city council meeting from September fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, payment vouchers, inter-local agreement with Lewis County for the use of the Jail Facility, Amendment Three, uh, service provider agreement for the National Public Safety Group LLC for law enforcement record management, or the LEARNS, uh, replacement project management. Um, uh, service provider agreement with the Tombwater School District for Summer Youth Program, audit engagement letter with the State Auditor's Office, uh, audit examination engagement letter with the State Auditor's Office. Uh, so that's quite a few things, and we uh, then we'll move on to council considerations. Uh, and this will start off with, uh, Administrator Parks, who will, uh, talk about the employment contract for Administrative Services Director.
This is on?
Yeah, I think I just turned it on.
I am happy to be here with you this evening to talk about, uh, our new hire, Michelle Sutherland, and, uh, to request the council's consideration for approving her employment contract. Um, Michelle, uh, will be serving in our Administrative Services Director position. Uh, we interviewed three very strong candidates. We had, um, we used a three-panel interview process, including a panel of directors, uh, which will be her peers, a panel of staff who will be her direct reports, and then my, the mayor and myself. Um, and Michelle, uh, was, uh, highly recommended by, uh, those groups through our group process. Uh, Michelle is highly qualified for this position. She currently is serving as the Administrative Services Director at the City of Shelton. Um, she's been there since two thousand and nineteen. Prior to that, she was the HR manager, manager for a three or four hundred facility, uh, correctional, uh, uh, building in Michigan and has served in other positions as well. Um, she has a degree in, uh, psychology and business administration. She's currently working on a master's degree in management and leadership from Western Governors University. And, um, I would say that from my own perspective, we really appreciated, um, Michelle's strategic thinking and planning experience. Um, she has extensive HR experience, including labor negotiations. Um, and, uh, she also has extensive experience with Civil Service Commission, which is something that's really important for the city of Tombwater with our police and fire departments. Um, a lot of the activity that HR, uh, works through is, involves, um, hiring for police and fire, uh, as well as all of our other employees. As the Administrative Services Director, um, her primary roles will be in HR, but she will also be um, uh, over, providing oversight and assistance to the clerk's function as well as the public records function. So, um, Michelle is here tonight, so if you, Michelle, would like to come up and say a few words at all, that would be great.
I would just like to say thank you, um, Mayor, Administrator, for this wonderful opportunity. I'm very excited to, um, work for the city of Tombwater and serve the community that I live in, and, uh, again, just, just thrilled.
Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Do I hear a motion to approve that contract?
I move that we approve the contract.
Do I have a second?
I'll second this as I need.
Okay. Any discussion on the motion? With that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you very, very much, and we're looking forward to, uh, having this position filled. Did you have something?
She starts on October second. I can't wait.
Yeah.
That's right following when, uh, Julianne McGarver, who has been a fabulous employee for us for the past several years, is going to be leaving September thirtieth, so glad to have, um, Michelle stepping in right away.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, I do have a question. I just remembered.
Okay, go, go ahead, Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you. I, I guess I would ask Lisa, when, uh, you were, um, I'm sorry, City Administrator Parks.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. Um, I, uh, I was wondering, so you had given us a list in, in the interim here of who we contacted for what and that kind of thing, so um, what about, um, I didn't hear you say is, uh, she staffing council as our previous person did?
Uh, no, this is, um, this is the Administrative Services Director.
You're not on, you're?
Yeah, it's not, uh, no, pull it closer, maybe?
Is it on now?
There.
It's on when the button is out. Uh, this is the administrative services position, so this is the position that has been, um, vacant since James, um, previously left in early February. Uh, the executive assistant position is in the process of being advertised and recruited. We have, um, several very qualified applicants, um, and, uh, that closes, I believe, on the twenty-fifth of the month. Um, and we will begin an interview process as well for that position.
Okay, so we continue with the list you gave us previously?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you very much. Uh, next item is the inter-local agreement with Thurston County Cities of Olympia-Lacey, uh, to, for implementation of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan, and Alyssa will be presenting that.
Good evening. I'm ready for the presentation, please. Thank you.
Is my mic working okay? Is this good? That's better. Okay. Good evening. On the 12th, I started to explain what's going on with this new ILA, and I'll try to get into it in a little bit more detail and tell the story of it and share what's in it exactly. This interlocal agreement seeks to replace the Phase 4 ILA for the climate work that was previously executed in 2022. The implementation strategy for the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan was developed with the assumption that there would not be staff capacity to help with implementation. As such, it was a little difficult to navigate that space now that we have a different situation where each of the jurisdictions do indeed have climate staff. So the goals of this reboot or this new ILA is a revised implementation strategy and clarified roles and responsibilities. Previously with the ILA that we're under now, until this one hopefully passes, it was unclear to a lot of the climate staff if jurisdictions could implement the plan independently, any actions in the plan, or if we had to wait for everyone to do everything at the same time together, the same way. So this hopes to clarify that so that we have a good path forward, so that we can work on implementing as many actions as possible. And we took a lot of time to get to this ILA that's here today. Starting in October, the staff teams, that's myself, Rebecca from the county, Pamela from City of Olympia at the time, and now we have Lindsay at the City of Lacey. We asked for a pause of the Climate Action Steering Committee meeting so that we could take some time and reflect. We met with the Thurston Regional Planning Council for a number of months, really trying to figure out the roles and responsibilities, how it would work with this new structure, and how we would move forward in a way that would be effective and efficient, as well as making sure that we're still working regionally and coordinating regionally whenever it makes sense. So we paused, we spent a couple of months meeting every week, every other week, digging into it. Then we had a Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan Retreat with the Climate Action Steering Committee, where we worked with the elected officials that are appointed to that to make sure that what we were thinking made sense to them as well, and make improvements from that conversation, including more perspectives and voices at the table. We then had another meeting. It's lots of meetings. All of these is lots of meetings, going over those retreat outcomes. And then we brought that to the Climate Advisory Work Group, which is a work group of up to 15 interested stakeholders of different community perspectives, and vetted those with them. So it went through all of those different layers. Then we continued. We brought it back to the Climate Advisory Work Group again. We then got news from the Thurston Regional Planning Council that they did not want to move forward with the regional climate work anymore. So we needed to then resolve that and figure out a way to move forward without that capacity. We did. We have drafted the ILA that's before you today. It continued to be vetted through more meetings, more processes, more arms of the climate mitigation implementation work, which we then gave a name to because there wasn't a good way for us to discuss that. So this new ILA recognizes the increased staff capacity. It defines the Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative because we didn't have an umbrella term to refer to those three groups that work together in coordination with the four jurisdictions to do the implementation of this plan. So we gave it a name. Unfortunately, it's another acronym with T and C, which I am working on a guide to make all of that make sense all the time. The ILA now clarifies the roles and relationships for all of those different parts of the TCMC. It establishes a framework for that regionally coordinated implementation all the way through to our first greenhouse gas shared target of 2030. And it provides increased opportunity for the Community Advisory Work Group, previously called the Climate Advisory Work Group, so that it's getting a more bottom-up approach, so that we can vet through diverse perspectives, actions that we're doing, so that we can reduce any harm that we're doing and increase the benefit of actions that we're taking. So previously, there had been a hierarchical ordered list of all the different parts of the implementation of the plan, and we realized that perhaps a Venn diagram was a better representation of what we were doing. So we have the jurisdiction parties that work to implement all of the actions. Ultimately, it is up to the jurisdictions to actually pass anything that's worked on in the regional setting. So you all have actual power, all of the power, and we wanted to make sure that that was represented and clear. We have the Executive Committee, which is made up of one elected official and one alternate from each jurisdiction. They will now be meeting quarterly to discuss that climate mitigation activities and ways that we can work together. We have the staff team. So that's myself and the other three staff from the other jurisdictions. And then we have the Community Advisory Work Group, like I said, up to 15 interested stakeholders from diverse perspectives to give input on the actions. The scope of the agreement is for the implementation to happen with the staff team and the Executive Committee to work on regional coordination and regional implementation whenever it makes sense. There are some actions in the plan that don't make sense to do regionally, like working on our own municipal buildings. We don't need to do that all together. At the same time, there's no big benefit of doing that, but there are a lot of actions in the plan that it really makes sense for us to do that together at the same time. It also creates an annual climate mitigation retreat. That's where all three parts of the TCMC get together and really look back on the past year, do strategic planning, and identify at least one action that we will all work on together regionally. Also creates a schedule for the climate mitigation plan updates. Starting in 2024, every other year, we'll have minor administrative plan updates if links aren't working, that kind of thing. But then, starting in 2028, and every six years, we'll have a more comprehensive look at the plan. So if we've done actions and they don't need to be in there anymore, we can do that. We can reconvene community groups, add new actions to meet targets that we may or may not be meeting at the time. So that'll be a bigger overhaul, and now we have a timeline for the community to know about when that would be happening. And then the greenhouse gas inventory. So we will be conducting a county-wide greenhouse gas inventory at least every three years. Also, the administrative support. So that's what TRPC used to do for us in the regional plan. So we wanted to outline that in the ILA. That's the coordination and facilitation of the Executive Committee and Community Advisory Work Group meetings, producing that annual report, and hosting and maintaining a third-party website for the collaborative. Each party, just like the last ILA, will contribute an equal share of funds. And we made it so that the schedule actually works really well for our budget process. Now, it's a biennial budget, and we have to have that no later than June 1st. So it works with our schedule in Tumwater, which is earlier than the other jurisdictions, at least for staff. So that works for us now. We'll know at the beginning of the budget cycle how much we need. And this is an estimate budget for the next 15 months. So this is the remainder of this year and 2024. The per-partner cost, $47,500, $17,500 for this year, the last couple of months, and then 2022 or 2024, wow, $30,000. For comparison, the ILA Phase 4 for 2022 was about $60,000. So this is a cost savings. However, this only includes the things that are actually in the ILA. Other regional implementation of that one item or two items that are identified in the annual retreat, that will come at a later time because we don't know what that is in 2024, or we do, but for 2025 and years subsequent. That will be a separate ILA for those actions, and it'll have its own budget. But these are for the things that we're kind of working together for the structure of making it so that we all work together in a coordinated manner. So the administrative support, the new website or branding, TRPC's climate webpage is not going to be there anymore, so we need to create a new one, and the greenhouse gas inventory. And it's worth noting that the administrative support, the City of Lacey, has volunteered to be the contract holder for that, and the county has volunteered to be the contract holder for the greenhouse gas inventory. The duration of the agreement is as soon as everybody signs it, up till December 31st, 2030, in line with that first greenhouse gas emission reduction target. There are some changes in the administrative and technical support aspect. So we're having a retreat that is planned by the staff team, and it's hosted on a rotating basis from the other jurisdictions. So this year, Lacey stepped up and hosted the retreat, and in 2025, it'll be our turn to do that. It's just a half-day meeting with some snacks and a facilitator. Greenhouse gas inventory, like I said, Thurston County will be holding on to the contract for that or managing the contract for that. And administrative support in Lacey will be the manager for that contract. And they've already done a request for qualifications for that administrative support, and it's looking good. That will have a very great organization to help us along with that. So happy to take any questions or feedback.
Any questions? Councilmember Althausen?
Thanks for the third-party administrative support for that contract. Are we thinking that that would be a consultant? Like, the nice part about TRPC was it was just a quasi-public, like, entity. But we're probably going to have to find a private consultant to support that, or what? Are there any thoughts on what that actually looks like for contracting?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I can speak to the RFQ process from Lacey in great detail. I'm still getting used to the procurement rules of Washington versus Florida. But we had a nonprofit that provided their proposal.
Okay, great.
That does this work all over the country and actually the world.
All right. Any other questions? All right. So is any, oh, Councilmembers Wirthau?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to thank Alyssa. This has been such a wonderful process to go through. This is such a wieldly topic, and to be able to break it up and just have these subject matter experts now in all the jurisdictions is just, we're just on, I really feel very confident, and it's just, it's been a really good process so far. And so with that, I would like to make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the interlocal agreement between Thurston County, the City of Lacey, City of Olympia, and the City of Tumwater to support regionally coordinated implementation of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan.
Great. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved by Councilmember Swarthau, seconded by Councilmember Althausen. Any discussion on the motion? Councilmember Dahlhoff, did you have a question or just getting ready?
I'm ready to vote, Mayor.
Okay. All right, with no questions, I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Great, the motion carries unanimous. Thank you, everyone. And so that takes care of all council considerations. We will now move to committee reports, and we will start out with Public Health and Safety and Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Public Health and Safety Committee met September 12th, where we talked about Thurston County, an update from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, and the interlocal agreement, which we just voted on in the consent agenda for Lewis County facilities in addition to Nusqually. So with the update from the Thurston County Prosecutor's Office, some points of interest regarding 2022 criminal case statistics. So cases received that are non-domestic violence in 2022 were 341. Total received that were domestic violence was 139. So for a total received that went to the Prosecuting Attorney's Office for 2022 for the City of Tumwater was 480. Right? So keep that number in mind. As we move on to 2023 up till June, cases received that were non-domestic violence were 215. Received that were domestic violence were 59. So the total from January to June in 2023, the total is 274. The total of last year was 480. So with that cadence, we are on track to increase that. It's going to be an increase there, a projection of 20% of arrests and cases going to the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. So I think that was a point to note. They also gave an update on State versus Blake from February 2021 to August 2023, the differences in what has happened. We also learned about the alternatives to traditional criminal justice. So in Thurston County, we have a drug DUI court in our Superior Court. We have a mental health court in District Court. We have a Veterans Court, District Court. We have a Behavioral Health Alternatives Court, which is in our Juvenile Court. And we have diversion, which is in Superior and District Court. And the newest program is LEAD, which is a law enforcement assistive diversion. So what's positive about that in Thurston County and having them contracting with them is that we have all these options for our residents in Tumwater who have touchpoints with the criminal justice system of ways to move through that system and get out of that system and continue to be members of our community. So it was a very, very good update, and what came out of that is, let me track. We would like, the Public Health and Safety Committee would like, since we heard from the Prosecuting Attorney's Office, to now then have an update from our Public Defender's Office, right? To see a more holistic approach of what's happening with both of our contracts. So we requested that. We've also requested an update from our school resource officers as the school year has begun. What are they seeing? Any trends, right? So that will be a few months down the road. So we have some temperature point from our school resource officers, and we'd like to know if they have any goals for the school year. And we've also asked for an update of the code violation process updates. Sometimes council members get questions on codes, right? And so I think it's a good reminder for all of us of what is that process, what are those steps? So we can be better informed, and our community can be better informed. And there could be opportunities for some updates or some changes based on new information, right? So that whole continuous improvement. So we also asked for that. So more to come. Thank you.
Thank you. General Government Committee, Councilmember Althausen?
Thank you, Mayor. The General Government Committee met last Wednesday, September 13th, and we took the first steps in discussing our updates to the comprehensive plan. We went over sort of this, I guess, the scope of work for what that update is going to entail regarding the housing element, as well as the land use elements. Those are the two elements that will probably receive the most changes over our work over the next year, year and a half, in terms of updating those. And that, I'd say, is just sort of the beginning, where our next few meetings will also, will be discussing different elements within the company.
Great, thank you. We have the Public Works Committee, Councilmember Swarthau?
Thank you, Mayor. The September 21st, we have two meetings that will be canceled, the 21st and the October 5th. So the next opportunity, the Public Works Committee meeting will be on October 19th. And at this point, we don't have an agenda, but I'm sure after missing a couple of weeks, that we'll have a nice full agenda for Public Works on October 19th.
Great, thank you. And Budget and Finance Committee has not met, but I expect that we probably will not, we will be meeting in the not-too-distant future as we come up on budget adjustments for the year. So next is the Mayor's City Administrator Report, and I will start with City Administrator Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few updates for you, councilmembers. So just for your information, we currently have three audits that are currently going on. We have an accountability audit that covers January 2020 through December 2022. We have a financial statements audit that covers the period of January 2022 through December of 2022. And then we have coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds audit that's covering also January 2022 through December 2022. This third audit is actually complete. Troy and I sat in on the exit interview. The State Auditor's Office is issuing an unmodified, clean audit with no concerns and no exit items. It's actually the best possible outcome we could hope for. So congratulations to Troy and the staff in finance. We also, I wanted to give you a follow-up on our discussion at the work session last week on food sharing. So Mike Matlock is going to be issuing an administrative interpretation to help clarify the current zoning requirements for small, the small food pantries, similar to what was done for the little libraries a couple of years ago. It won't make any changes to the current zoning code, but help to provide some clarity for people. We also are going to be including in the draft 2024 work plan that will be reviewed and approved by the council at the beginning of 2024, the option for completing a food system plan that we discussed at the work session, and which will likely include recommendations for changes to zoning regulations, as well as likely a whole lot of other recommendations. I wanted to take an opportunity to provide and share with the council some kudos that we have received from staff. I think anytime the public has had an opportunity to have a positive experience at the city with our staff and taken the time to send an email, I feel like it's important to share that with you. So the first one is, a woman was involved in a car accident, motor vehicle accident at the end of August. She was calling to thank both the Tumwater Police Department, as well as the Tumwater Fire Department. She says, "In a day and age when police can be much maligned, I want to be sure to personally thank all those who helped me that day. They were kind and helpful." Her sincere thanks to everyone, and especially Officer Kay Clark, for being there just when I needed them. Also, kudos to Brittany McClanahan in the Community Development Department. Mike received an email that specifically thanked her for being helpful. Uh, Mike received an email that specifically thanked her for being helpful, um, and, um, as well as gracious in accommodating somebody who is having permit scheduling issues. Um, and, and Mike's got a twofer tonight. The, uh, Community Development Department team as a whole received, um, a great, some great feedback from, uh, one of the tenants down at the Craft Market Building as they were doing their final inspection. Uh, she was expressed how impressed she was with the service she had received from the department and, um, felt like she was greeted with a happy and courteous, um, uh, demeanor from everyone that she encountered in Mike's department. So kudos to them. Um, and then, um, um, moving on to the building, just a quick update on the Building Code Council issue that we've discussed in the past where the energy code requirements and the wildland urban interface code requirements. The, um, uh, State Building Code Council voted last Friday to delay again the effective date of these code provisions, um, out to March 15th of 2024. Uh, so we will continue to monitor that. Staff has continued to meet with staff. Our staff has continued to meet with the staff of the Building Code Council as well as AWC and our lobbyists to understand, um, you know, what are the next steps forward and what are the implications of those code, uh, changes, particularly the wild and, uh, urban land interface? Um, lastly, uh, we, uh, found out, I believe just today, that the city has received a $334,000 grant, um, um, from the U.S. Department of Agriculture Forest Service. Um, this is a grant that will, um, support a program that is, uh, expected to cost approximately $670,000. Um, it is prospective in, in that it will help to hire an urban forester in 2025. Um, it will help us with a, a study of heat island effects, um, by installing some temperature data, um, loggers in 2024. Um, it will help develop a canopy equity program that expands the urban forest in low canopy areas and or overburdened areas. Um, hopefully by 2027. Uh, we'll also develop a tree assessment assistant program, and it will help us launch the street tree trimming grants that supports tree maintenance adjacent to low to moderate income properties. So kudos to Dan and his staff for that wonderful work in obtaining that grant on our behalf. And I can answer any questions?
Uh, Councilmember Kathy, you had a question?
I do.
You just put yourself on mute, Ca- uh, Councilmember Kathy.
Thank you, Mayor. I, uh, I wanted to ask Lisa that, uh, I'm confused when we use the term food pantries or food, uh, a food, the idea of a food pantry is different than a food. I don't know what food stand things that people have, uh, you know, out of their gardens or in their yards or, uh, like what we've di- discussed here, um, before. And, and what brought up the whole issue? So what is the difference between a food pantry and the other food system thing or whatever we're calling it?
So the reason we're doing the administrative interpretation is to help with this particular thing. So I believe the intent is to help our staff and the community, uh, better understand what the zoning code currently allows in a residential zoning district with respect to food sharing opportunities. And it is likely going to be something that is similar to the little library structure in terms of scale, location. Um, you know, the type of activities that might be centered around that type of activity. So currently, the zoning code doesn't specifically speak to this use. Um, but similar to what we did with the little libraries, we established some, uh, uh, an interpretation that helped to identify what instances would be consistent with an accessory use for a residential zoning area. It would not change the zoning code at all. Um, the food system plan that we discussed and recommended last, um, week at the work session is intended to take stock of the entirety of the food system, um, in our community. And the, uh, examples that Mike provided included not just how food is distributed and given out to the public and how people are able to obtain it. In some locations in Watcomb County, for example, it also addresses for the, the production of food and how and where that can occur. And so our recommendation with regard to the food service plan, excuse me, the food system plan is to do an inventory of what we already are doing and try to identify with good specificity what the, where the gaps are in the current food system program in our community to be able to more directly make changes and recommendations in terms of activities or things that we could do um, under the auspices of city government to help fill the gaps that are identified through that inventory process. So in, in the one case temporarily, we're trying to provide some clarity so that people don't misunderstand and we are better able to explain and convey to people what they are allowed to do and what they aren't allowed to do. And then the other instance, the idea is to take a holistic approach, um, and try to address the issue from a, from a broader, uh, perspective and, and identify a, a variety of solutions, some of which will likely include, and may likely include changes to the zoning regulations that would then go through the process of amending the zoning code.
And this, this process is months long, years long?
Months long. It would be, it would be part of the work plan for 2024.
Okay. And my question is, um, I, I hope as we're looking at this, we're aware that food pantries are not fresh food. Food pantries are all non-perishable food. So you can only have cans or packages or things like that. So there is, there is already in people's minds a big difference between someone putting the vegetables from their garden on a table and, um, and a food pantry. And so, um, you know, I think that's an important distinction to make as we're moving along and using the language of, uh, you know, the, the, the process of this food, um, you know, systems thing we're going to do, that if we use pantry, we understand, people understand what, what that means. Because those, the book, the libraries, using the term little libraries is really little. And, um, you know, and so that doesn't hold much food. And, and it's limited ki- types of food. So I think these are important and important to do now. Uh, make sure that the definitions of what we're going to be discussing over the next months are, um, are understood. Is, is, I think it's important as.
Yeah. Yes. And I think, you know, Mike is, Mike is sitting in the audience and, and hears and understands that. Uh, an important component of zoning regulations is to provide specific definitions of different, so that everybody understands what it is that we're regulating and how it's, and how it is regulated. So, uh, agree 100% and, you know, acknowledge that the, the current deficiency in our code, it's, or it's, that's a negative connotation I don't, that I don't intend. But the current issue with the code is that they don't, we don't have definitions of food sharing. We don't have definition of food pantry. We don't have, we may have a definition of food bank, I'm not sure, Mike. But we don't have enough definitions to be able to provide, uh, any clarity in terms of how it currently, how the zoning code currently addresses those types of uses.
Probably some of that is that when that was written, there wasn't such a, a need.
Exactly.
There weren't as many hungry people, uh, around could be part of it. Um, what was, now I know I got off on that. What, what is the year, uh, the, the last report you gave?
On the urban forestry grant that we received?
Right. So, so does that mean that we have some things to do with our trees and our tree regulations and our, our, our tree code on hold because of the wildfire thing? So how are these things working together? Because if, if they're going to put off and put off and put off, are we going to continue to put off our work on, um, trees?
So the relationship between the ordinances that we're working on or that are currently on hold because of the State Building Code Council issues and this forestry grant, and I'm going to wing this because I don't know this for certain, but Dan's in the audience, as is Alyssa, so they will correct me. I believe you could accurately describe the grant as being a tool, uh, that helps us implement the provisions of the urban forestry program and help us in some ways to, um, assist with, um, uh, monitoring and implementation and enforcement of those other ordinances. If you have an urban forester on staff, then you're able to better understand, uh, where you have, um, where compliance with the tree ordinance, for example, uh, is, is being successful and is, uh, where we maybe need to find, um, some solutions and make some changes. So in the one case, we're talking about the writing of the regulation. In the other case, we're talking about an implementation of the overall urban forestry plan, um, part of which may include, um, some code enforcement or code evaluation, I would guess. Did I, did I, Dan's given me a thumbs up, so I'm good.
So we have, we've put a hold on, on working on the tree ordinance on, on the, it's to be updated desperately. And, and so we're not, we're not working on that and, uh, until, I mean, this was the decision until, until this other, you know, wildfire thing. I, I can't remember the, the, um, the exact wording of it. But, um, and so is that still going to be in effect? So we're not work on, are we going to go back to working on some of the tree ordinance material?
So, yes, yes, thank you. So the ordinances themselves are currently in an, uh, like a preliminary draft form and they are basically ready to go in terms of our process. But the decision was made to put that on hold because the implementation of those codes as they're currently drafted would be inconsistent with this new Building Code Council that, um, regulation that is supposed to go into place. So we aren't currently working on drafting those three ordinances. We are, however, working on trying to understand and work with both the State Building Code Council as well as AWC and our lobbyists to better understand those regulations and to better understand and maybe encourage the Building Code Council to consider changes to those, um, those, uh, particular regulations that are related specifically to the wildland urban interface. Um, and I, I think we're making, you know, good progress. I, I would, um, say that it appears the Building Code Council, as we discussed a couple of months ago, didn't, had a laudable goal in reviewing and developing the herb, wildland urban interface requirements based on increased wildfires in and around, um, not just Eastern Washington anymore, but also in Western Washington. And just didn't understand the implications of what they, what they did. And we're helping them understand that. So we are actively working on trying to resolve and understand the differences. Um, and once that happens, then we will be able to, um, pick those codes that we've drafted and put on hold in terms of the review process back into, um, back into the, um, the, I mean, review process.
So we are operating under our current tree code. Is that right?
Yes. We operate under the existing regulations until the public process, which includes planning commission review and recommendation with public hearings as well as the city council review, uh, and public hearings, I believe, and adoption of new provisions. The existing codes remain in, in place.
So people in Tomwater can continue to report, um, neighbors cutting down all their trees?
I'm looking at Mike.
Yeah.
Mike.
Mike's, yeah, um, and Mike's there. I think it's Alex that, that I've talked to. There's a lot of tree cutting going on of, of large, almost look like, you know, legacy type trees in neighborhoods. And so some of the people, um, I've talked to or they contacted me and they knew that something was on hold and all of these things we've been discussing that are, I said, confusing to us. But, um, you know, they just wondered about, do they still call, um, Mike's office and, and report this? Or do these people have a permit? I've done this myself in recent months. Um, and so, um, this conversation, uh, is very good to know kind of where we are and why we are certain places or not yet in others. So, um, so I appreciate that people should continue to, to be vigilant about.
Certainly, certainly do that. If there's, there's people that are concerned about tree violations, they should let us know and we, we respond to those right away. Because as we've talked about before, you don't put trees back up again, they're being cut down illegally. So we go out there right away.
Yeah. Thank you, Mike. And, uh, your office, I can add another kudos to your office. Uh, I've talked to, is it, it's Alex, right?
Alex, yeah.
Yeah. Now I've talked to him about the three things. I don't even need to introduce myself anymore and why it is I'm calling. He, he knows. Oh, hi. Off we go. So thanks, Mike. I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you. Anything else? No. Any other questions from councilmembers? All right. Uh, so for, go ahead.
I just want to thank Lisa for going through all of those things for me and again for whoever wanted to hear all that. So thank you, Lisa.
You, you bet. It's very important that it's clear and that everybody understands because it can get extremely complicated.
Yeah.
Especially how one thing interacts with something else. It, it just can get very complicated.
Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. So for my report, uh, I attended, um, one meeting since our last council meeting, which was inner city transit authority board meeting. And with that, we adopted the 2022 annual report and the 2023 to 2028, uh, transit development plan. Uh, we also, um, had an update on the, from the Human Resources Department. As many of you know, it was been very difficult recruiting, uh, uh, transit drivers, bus drivers. Uh, they have been now partnering, uh, with WorkSource. And on August 31st, they had 61 individuals register for the event, which was just absolutely amazing. So there were 14 contingent job offers and the class, uh, the fifth class of the year, which will start on October 9th, uh, could have as many as, uh, 20, as 20 some, um, participants. So that's really good, getting more and more bus drivers. So it makes it very important to get those bus drivers trained so that we can bring, uh, transit services back to pre-pandemic, which has been very difficult when you have, uh, staff shortages. Uh, and we're also wanted to let everyone know that the Community Advisory Committee for Inner City Transit, which is kind of like our planning commission, um, is, is going to, uh, accept applications for October 6th, uh, October 6th. So anyone who's interested in maybe doing that, it is a, uh, some, um, public person sitting on the board. And I believe there's 23 members of that board. Uh, so they are taking applications and this also includes youth. So if there's some youth that is in a high school, there is an, uh, actual position available for that. So that was the main areas of, um, that, of that meeting. Uh, and I wanted to also say that I attended the senior picnic, uh, at Heritage Park. And I saw a couple of other councilmembers there, so I will just go ahead and let them talk because they were much more involved in that. Uh, some of my upcoming events that I'll be attending is tomorrow evening, Kindred Park Opening Ceremony, uh, will happen around six o'clock. On September 30th is the Fall Fest. So I'm encouraging, um, all of our community members to please come to the Fall Fest. It should be a great event and that's on Saturday, September 30th. I believe we've announced our drop-off clean-off date for the city of Tomwater as, uh, October 7th. And I believe they're planning on having the market building over at the brewery, uh, area, uh, over on, over by, uh, South Peterson Community College, Heritage Brewing on Capitol Boulevard. And I believe that is tentatively scheduled for October 14th. So there's some really great events that are coming up in the next few weeks. So I encourage everyone to, um, pay, uh, and a lot of those items are posted on our Facebook page. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and do, move to council reports. And I will start in Zoom land. So I will start off in the order I see individuals. So I'll start off with Councilmember Dahlhoff.
Thank you, Mayor. Since our last council-
Since our last council meeting, I had eight meetings and the highlight of those is LOT, which are Clean Water Alliance with Lacey Olympia, Tombwater, Thurston County. The highlights of those meetings was a digestion system improvements phase two procurement process, which sounds dull, but it's not super interesting. We also talked about the Bud inlet reclaim water plant piping replacement construction contract. Also more exciting than it sounds. There's a lot of work to keep it going of things that are coming out of our homes and going to another location and digesting and moving through pipes. So it meets certain requirements from the Department of Ecology and Ecology to go into Bud inlet, right, as an ongoing process. And LA is doing really, really well of always being below those thresholds and even going below that, right, with their technology. Because they understand the importance of the work that they do. The one thing that was interesting is we will at LOT be starting the strategic planning overview, the end of this year, beginning of next year. And I think that, that overlaps quite nicely with our comprehensive plan elements. I know we have a utility element, but LOT is not a part of that because it's not our utility. But I think there's an opportunity with maybe the housing element, with LOT doing the affordable housing connection rate, the discounted rate. And in the strategic work plan, LOT is open to the opportunity of looking for how to incentivize ADUs potentially. So I think there's an opportunity, basically this is for Dan, since he's in the audience, and other staff. If there are elements that come up in our comprehensive plan elements, that LOT could be a part of in housing or even addressing partnerships, that, that could be a win-win. And I broached that with LOT at the meeting and staff are interested. If there's an opportunity to showcase collaboration and partnership and to put that in a comprehensive plan and their plan, um, I think that could be really exciting. And we haven't done that. So that's the highlight. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I saw, I saw staff writing, so. Councilmember Snyder.
Mayor, I do not have a report at this time.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Kathy.
Well, mine's not quite as exciting as, uh, councilmember Dahlhoff. No, we, but I, I attended three meetings. Solid Waste Advisory Council, we are talking about emphasis on needing to, uh, I don't know, you don't train, you don't train people, you don't train the public. But we seem to use that word too. We, we need to do less, everyone knows this, less food waste, more composting and so forth. So people are encouraged because after repeat and repeat and repeat of, of, you know, trying to get recycling, uh, more people doing it and get it right and get it clean and all of that. There, there's been some, some progress on that. So, so the, I'm glad to hear that the city is, is now doing, um, you know, food waste and, and the, you know, for the compost and things. Anyway, this is a big conversation, um, right now. And then I, along with councilmember Dahlhoff and councilmember Althouser, attended the general government meeting. I just wanted to mention it because it's at eight o'clock in the morning. And then I had an Olympic region, uh, Clean Air Agency meeting, ORCA, uh, on that same day. So my, I just can't make it as exciting as, you know, all the good things that LOT's doing. So that's my report.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember Swarthup.
Oh, thank you, mayor. So since our last meeting, uh, I attended the retreat for TRPC. And in that, we discussed the strategic plan. We had a presentation from the Wash dot staff. We had from the diversity, equity and inclusion plan manager and the environmental justice and healthy environment, gentlemen, uh, their shade, excuse me, shared a presentation about HEAL. And HEAL, the acronym stands for Healthy Environment for All. And so it talks about environmental justice. And so I do have the slide presentation that I can make available if you're interested in seeing this, the information that was presented at that meeting. And then the last thing we did there was to confirm the TRPC's vision, mission and values. And then on Monday, I chaired the lodging tax advisory committee. We had 15 applicants and $190,000 to distribute. And so we made our decisions and that information will be coming to council for your approval. And I didn't see it on the agenda yet, but I would expect that we'll be seeing it at the end of October. There's, I think there's a waiting period that we have to meet and then, but you'll be, have the opportunity to review our decisions and hopefully approve them. So that will be coming up. So that's the end of my report.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Jefferson, uh, one second. There you go.
On 13th September, last Wednesday, I attended our monthly senior picnic, where we had lots of seniors come out to fellowship and eat some good chow. The weather was beautiful and a tasty chicken was donated by Safeway. Some seniors even took some to-go plates for their friends who were ill or for coworkers like Mr. Chuck Danny, who couldn't make it. Our picnic event next month will be best chili competition. And once again, councilmember Charlie Schneider is the person to beat. 14th September, I attended a T-Hopes leadership meeting. T-Hopes now has an organization to house our coalition. We no longer fall under the Department of Health as of one October. The organization chosen was ESD 113. Here's a little bit about the process. When the coalition met last month to discuss which organization to choose, ESD or Family Support Center, we recommended ESD 113 because of medical employee benefits. Both organizations are exceptional and we thank them both. At the meeting, we shared our frustration with the constant change of managers. We're looking at three in three years. Our current manager recently left, so there will be a new manager identified soon. The health department personnel explained the high turnover rate and staff shortages in healthcare workers. And T-Hopes is not an exception. We hope to gain some stability with ESD 113, starting in October. I had an Olympia and beyond meeting today where we discussed creating our destination management plan with a private consultant. To help us determine how we can make Thurston County a premier travel destination, they will analyze what we are doing right, what we are doing wrong, and suggest concrete steps on how Thurston County should look like in 10 years as it relates to tourism. The destination management committee met for the first time today and all community stakeholders were present, which included our own Austin Ramirez. That's all I have, mayor.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Dahlhoff, did you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Angela, just, councilmember Jefferson, just a quick question. Did I hear that right? Did you say family education support services? I thought you said family support center and it should be FAS, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
FAS.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Althouser.
Thanks, mayor. The regional housing council has not met since our last council meeting, but we are meeting a week from tomorrow. That's my report.
Great. So as you, uh, councilmembers are aware, we are going to be now going into an executive session. And I'm wanting to verify time, it should be about 15 minutes. So, okay, with that, so, uh, councilmembers in Zoom, you probably have had another link to that. So council will now meet in executive session to discuss real estate acquisition pursuant to RCW 42.30.110 sub 1 sub B. And we are expected to be, uh, in there for 15 minutes. So we are expected to return back to session. So we are just going to recess and we will be back, uh, at, let me do math here, at, uh, in 15 minutes. So we will be back at eight, uh, 8:35. So with that, we are recessed. Thank you, everyone. We're reconvening the September 19th, 2023 city council meeting. Do, we are done with our executive session. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Everyone's on mute.
So mute.
Okay, second. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.